Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you to everyone who's here and who is watching or listening. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. That's just a reminder to silence your cell phones. And Craig or Carol are here if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are to approve the commission meeting minutes on June 16th, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second. Wow, we have some people who are jumping on these motions.
We are on it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,713,505.96.
Pay the bills.
Second?
Motion and a second, are there any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Ma'am Chair, there are some larger bills. The Highway Department, which has bridges and stuff going on, they had bills totaling $578,000. And the jail project had $683,000. Meanwhile, there are quite a few individual small bills for the primary and city election that we just had, set up and tear down. I'm estimating that there were more than 200 of them. And we have quite a few bills for mental illness this week also. But so with those two big things, oh, one more, Metro Communications got $37,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there were a lot of noteworthy bills. And I think that for those of us who take, you know, are tempted to take elections for granted and the right to vote for granted, you should see the number of pages of people, how many people it takes to pull off an election. And so it is, I very much appreciate all those folks who, in the midst of all this COVID pandemic, were willing to come out and work so hard on an election. All right, any other comments about the bills? So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are a couple of reports there that I would recommend for your review from Children's Inn and from the Juvenile Detention Center. Takes us to item five, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval?
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is an abatement recommended for approval on Paul Fick Homes, parcel 90481. Good morning.
Good morning. Chris Lilly Equalization. Yeah, this one here, this is an office here on this one here for parcel number 90481. We're asking for an abatement for 2019 property taxes in the amount of $4,291.42 for Paul Fick Homes. This one here is actually my office being very diligent. The, there was a permit taken out to build a house. An appraiser went there and looked at it. Like a month later, there was a replat, plating it into three lots. And the house actually moved onto another parcel. And the appraiser went out there and saw a permit and went out there and thought it was a different house on a different lot. So unfortunately, it was the same house. And due to the plating, it had moved its location. So we inadvertently assessed it on two different parcels. So it was discovered and we recommend approval of the abatement.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? I entertain a motion.
Move for approval? Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger? Aye. Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. So that takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. DPNO 61553 in the amount of $2,842.20 names one lienee, the petitioner, who is bringing the compromise before you as she is in the process of purchasing a home for her family. And the petitioner is present today. The petitioner states that she is asking for a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $500 or less. The lien fees are recorded from December 2006 to May 2014. The petitioner had two previous liens in other counties. And as of 30 minutes ago, 20 minutes ago, we have confirmed those have been taken care of. So that's nothing that will hang anything up. The Minnehaha County liens were established through public defense of $194.70 and poor relief of $2,647.50. In the information that you received, you found the application, the petitioner's letter to the commission, the lien sheet, and the purchase contract on the home that she's purchasing. I did go through and confirm the following pay stubs, bank statement, the last income tax return. And we were working through the process on those other two counties liens. So with that, would open up with any questions?
Are there any questions for Carol? I know that the petitioner is here. If you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to just stand up and speak where you are. You don't have to, and you don't have to identify yourself. You're good? Okay. Then I would open it up to the Commissioners.
Ma'am Chair, you know, this party has got a family to raise and has, is working to acquire a home for them. The fact is that, that public defender lien dates from 2014. And I can't say that, well, that I've been perfect since then. And, you know, just making payments and being here today shows respect for this debt. And I really would like to compromise this favorably.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I would suggest that we compromise this just for payment of the public defender fees and remove the poor relief fees. Like Jeff said, she's in a house and she'll be paying taxes and become a taxpayer. And she's shown herself to be responsible. And she's caring for her children. And so I would make a motion for $195 even to satisfy the lien.
Ma'am Chair, I'll second that, but I would be willing to go below that.
That's the public defender fees, and so that was why I asked for that.
I understand.
Any other comments or questions?
Do we get a second?
Yeah, no, we haven't. So is there a second to Commissioner Heiburger's?
Yes, there is.
That's okay, there is a second. So now we're at comments and questions.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to, to abate the lien for a payment of $195 even. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, I think Carol can help you with that. And this takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here? Anyone out in the hallway for public comment? All right, seeing no one, will take us to regular business. First item of regular business is a public hearing and second reading on rezone number 20-02 from A1 Agricultural to C Commercial. David, good morning.
Good morning, County Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. Rezoning 20-02 is a request to rezone a parcel of land that's just south of the intersection of South Dakota State Highway 115 and County Highway 122. This intersection is also known as the Midway Corner, where there is an existing convenience store, gas station, automobile repair shop. I'm just going to flip forward to the next slide that shows the map. The property is outlined in red. It's approximately 1.29 acres. The applicant has requested to be rezoned from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. As you can see, the, some of the neighboring properties, you can see Raven off to the southeast. They have a large property there. And then the property that the applicant also owns is to the north. You see there's several white buildings there. Those are existing commercial properties, as I mentioned. And the applicant's request is to have future development for those businesses to the north. There's residents located exactly to the north of this property along Highway 115, as well as to the west of the highway as well. And the rest of the land is agricultural farmland. The, this has been before the Planning Commission on May 18th, 2020. The provided a map of this location, as well as the minutes from that meeting. They're included for your review. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of rezoning 20-02. The notice was published in accordance with state law in June. The, so action, the Board of County Commissioners may vote to approve or deny rezoning 20-02. And I do have some pictures that I'd like to go through as well to show the existing house that's on the subject property. As you can see, the sign is there. The driveway is off to the left of that image. And this just shows the property in full view. There's trees on the south side. This is Highway 115 with the turn lane off to the right of that image. And then the highway off to the right. And this is looking north towards the gas station that's there, Midway Corner, as you see the sign. This is the house to the north of the subject property. You can see the commercial buildings in the background behind that to the east. This is kind of like a driveway for that, that house property. And I think might be some access for, I think the petitioner can clarify on that. The, this is the gas station, service repair. And then this is just looking at that house that's there to the north of the subject property, another angle. And then the house across to the west of the highway, as you can see, there's trees there. And then this is the looking north, or looking back south behind the gas station. And then this is that business that was just permitted a couple of years ago, actually, for conditional use permit. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David? Commissioner Heiburger?
So by changing the zoning on this, if that house is ever moved off of that spot, the building eligibility, well, the building eligibility is gone once we've changed the classification of this. And if they move the house, they can't build another house on that area, correct?
That, that's correct. Once it's rezoned to commercial, then there's no more building eligibility. If they, they wouldn't be able to replace the house on that property if it was torn down.
One more question. If they had property next door, they wouldn't be able to move that building eligibility either, would they? Because once we've reclassified, they can't move it? So they'd have to move it before the building eligibility before they reclassify?
Correct. Once it's rezoned to commercial, the building eligibility goes away.
Goes away. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. And this is a public hearing, so if the proponents are here, they may speak. Morning.
I'm Todd Ibis. I am the Controller for Midway Service Vol and Oil. And I live at 1600 West Wicklow in Sioux Falls. Just available for any questions. Would like you all to know the property that is kind of in the middle. We have a purchase agreement for that with the owner. And that was signed, and I believe is getting completed today with the lawyers. So should be closing today, I believe, maybe even as we speak, so.
Questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this rezon?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger? Aye. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is a brief presentation on the 2020 Sioux Empire Fair, Scott Wick. I believe Scott is with us.
And if you would just ask him to mute his, his live what, live feed?
Oh, okay.
I'm getting some feedback. He is right there, otherwise.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Did you hear Carol's comment about muting your live feed?
Yes, I just muted that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'll let you take, I'll let you have the floor, Scott.
All right, well, I trust you all got to read the brief about the upcoming fair. And just wanted to take this time to answer any questions that you all may have in regards to that brief that I had sent out.
Are there questions for Scott? Scott, you know, there's a lot of people listening who won't have read this. So maybe you want to just give a high level overview of what the plans are for the fair this year for the folks who may be listening or watching.
Okay, so we are planning on having the fair in August. It will be August 1st through the 8th. There's, we're following changes such as, you know, 4H will not be active. That changes the way livestock looks. Bingo has chosen not to participate. We're not going to have the pedal pole. However, we are moving forward with, and we have scheduled livestock, open livestock shows and FFA shows. Our cattle shows and goat and pig and sheep will continue on in those fashions of an open format and a 4H format. Our horse shows will still continue in the Expo Building as usual. We did secure a carnival. At one time, it looked like we weren't going to get a carnival because all of the routing partners had canceled. But our carnival, Crabtree Amusements, has partnered with Todd Armstrong, who used to play our fair. So they've combined to partner up and make a little route of about five existing fairs in the Midwest. So they will be coming up, and we will have a very, very nice showing of rides that, we may not have as many rides as before. I'm fine with that. So they'll be spread out more, and we'll make better utilization of the grounds. We'll have entertainment in the grandstand all but two nights. There'll be a press release coming out on some changes. All of our entertainment has, we've talked to them, and they've called us, or we've called them. And they're excited to play. They've committed that even if they lose some of their routing coming up, they just want to get back to work. So they're committed to coming on up. One thing we did, we have done, we just received our first shipment of, we'll have, I've got two 55-gallon drums of hand sanitizing gel. We just purchased 50 dispensers. And we also have enough, they're Effer San tablets and they're disinfectant slash sanitizer, depending on how strong you mix them. Once you mix them together with water, they have a shelf life of two weeks. So we have anywhere from 500 to 700 gallons of those tablets on hand for either a disinfecting or a sanitizing solution. We met with our garbage and bathroom crew yesterday, and we will be heightening the times and the presence in the bathrooms in all of our buildings, the new comfort center, in the Expo Building, and all the areas where the high traffic is. I guess in a nutshell, what we're, you know, our mess, we have our messaging at our entrances that addresses COVID, has been up for about three, three, four weeks now. And pretty much our message is we're moving forward as, as normal as we can. We're taking reasonable measures to, to, to move forward and invite the public out. And, you know, our, it comes down to if you are comfortable coming to the fair, we definitely welcome you. But if you, number one, if you have an underlying condition, or you know you've been exposed, not feeling well, please stay home. Or for those that just don't feel comfortable coming to a gathering, a public gathering outside, and they, they choose not to come, we do respect that and understand that. And hope that, you know, maybe the atmosphere will be a little different next year, and it can come out for next year. But we're pressing forward as we speak. And, you know, we're still planning for next year's fair already as well. But we're, we've had a meeting with, Gerald was at it as we met, when we met with the mayor of Sioux Falls. And we stay in constant contact with everybody. We monitor things daily, talk to our other partner fairs around the country. And we, we're just, we're excited to move forward. Hopefully, we have some good weather. You know, it is five weeks away, a little over five weeks away, you know, barring any major, major things happening that would change how we look at, how the fair would look. You know, we are moving forward.
Thank you. That was a great overview. Questions for Scott? I just would thank you, Scott, and your, your committee. I know you guys have been working tirelessly on this and are meeting almost every week, I believe. And, you know, this, these are challenging times. If we try to move forward and return back to a new normal and conduct events like your event in a safe way for everybody, but it sounds like you guys have done a lot of great planning. And it's exciting to see that you are going to be able to offer a fair that's pretty comparable to the experience that people have had in the past. And so we look forward to that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. We definitely appreciate your support and all the commissioners, Gerald and Gerald as a liaison. You know, it has been exciting, and we've, we have found how thrifty and efficient we can be in these times. And especially when it came to tracking down the sanitizer and disinfectant, found a company that has all the inventory we would ever need. So, and he said he can get more stuff to us right away. But that, that, that big important key to our fair is onsite. And also our carnival will have the hand sanitizer on the fences around the rides that's available for the guests to use as they enter or as they get off. So, yeah, we're, you hit it right on that. The fair is about experiences, and it always has been. Not everybody likes rodeos. They may not see a rodeo. But we're going to have as much of it as we can. And everybody's more than welcome to come out that would like to participate. So we, it's going to look a little different, but we're very excited to, to have the fair and provide that for Minnehaha County, Sioux Falls, and the surrounding community.
All right. Commissioner Bennega, did you have a?
Yeah, I would just add that Cindy and I had the opportunity and with Scott and his board members to meet with the mayor and the mayor's staff. And they were all very supportive and frankly, were encouraging positive cooperation in making this work. So I do appreciate not only the fair board's activity, but certainly the mayor's staff and the ability to make this happen.
Well, great. Well, thank you for being with us this morning, Scott.
Thank you all for everything you do. You take care.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. All right. That takes us to our next item, which is Auditor Litz, a briefing on the Election Task Force. Good morning.
Good morning, Commission. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And as requested, I'm here today to kind of give a rundown on where I'm at with the absentee ballot review board, or whatever we're going to wind up calling this thing. You know, as it stands today, I have four members, and these have been, these are lined up right away. Committee members are Kia Warreni from the South Dakota Secretary of State's Office, Sue Roust, of course, a former Minnehaha County Auditor, is interested in serving, Deb Elifson, a citizen who served on the Election Review Committee, which is a document that I've pulled out recently and reviewed. And I probably would recommend that anybody involved with that, look at that thing because there was some good material presented in there. The fourth one I have is Kurt Saleh from the Sioux Falls City Council. I also plan to review, I plan to review and ask two other citizens to be on the committee. They're unidentified at this point. I've all, but one thing I did do is I identified and secured the services of two ladies that are going to be instrumental in helping implement the findings of the committee for the November election absentee process. This would be Margaret Gertzma and Jan Schaefer. I don't know if you knew it, but for years, we had a lady down in elections named Ann. Ann that did the absentee. And she was there every time this time here. She was not able to due to the COVID concerns. But Margaret and Jan will be attending all the meetings. And, and they will be the ones that will take this group forward with the actual implementation of the findings that we have and doing the absentee process in large part. Both have had experience in the absentee process and expressed interest in expanding their roles as supervisors for the general election. Mr. Tom Greco, a city clerk, is also going to be attending the proceedings and offer his observations and input. The structure of the meetings has been broken down into three parts with no firm dates set as yet. The first meeting will be structured around a walkthrough of current review, or, and a review of current processes and what effect the absentee request rush had on the system. Descriptions of various job, I mean, yeah, descriptions of various job descriptions and the roles played will be presented. Questions will be fielded by various players of the current system. And requests for additional information needed will be noted and supplied back to the members before the second meeting. Second meeting will be focused on questions that the first meeting caused, and any additional information needed by the committee members will be noted and forwarded before the third meeting. Two key figures in the current absentee process will be made available to provide perspectives on how the absentee process works, both walk-up and mail. And these are people that are staff in my office that have been involved in the absentee process and elections every time. Challenges this absentee cycle caused and any clarifications needed by the committee will be answered or noted and dealt with as soon as possible. This portion of the meeting will probably have additional requests for data and such. And, but every attempt will be made to provide much information before the third meeting. The third meeting will focus on committee conclusions and recommendations, both procedural and the legal aspects of doing absentee ballots. If some recommendations involve legislative involvement or a strategy for that will also be asked for. If another meeting is desired by the committee after the third one, it will be set at that time. I plan to firm up a calendar for the meetings in the middle of July. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Mr. Bennega?
Bob, thanks for being here. First of all, I noticed that there's not really a representative from the school board. Are you looking for someone to do that? I had someone who has been associated with that group for a long time who would like to volunteer.
I guess that's an interesting perspective that I had not considered, and I would certainly do so. And maybe you and I could have a conversation if you've got somebody identified.
I had somebody that gave, gave me a call. Would be happy to volunteer, and I'll share that name with you.
Very good.
Secondly, from a legal standpoint, can you help me with, I know there's been various opinions about when we can start counting absentee ballots? Six weeks before we frankly had the official election, we were getting ballots by the mailbox full. What's your interpretation of the legal process that we're able to do and when we can start counting?
Well, I have to be careful about what terms I use here, but on Election Day, that morning, I can start pulling those absentee ballots out of the envelopes and tabulating them. I cannot release any results, of course, until 8:00 due to the time zone when it's 7:00 out West River. So that is the, that is the, that is the idea that we've always operated on was that I could open those ballots, run them through the tabulator, and store that until later and release it at 8:00.
Do we have a legal interpretation?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes, I do.
Okay, is that from the legislature or?
Well, actually, I got that interpretation from Kirsten Katmeyer when Kirsten was here.
Okay. And what does that basically say? That we can't open them until 7:00 on Election Day?
It's starting 7:00 in the morning on Election Day when the polls open.
Okay.
And that means you can't do anything with those ballots before that? You can't get them sorted? You can't check?
Well, no, no, we, we've always organized them according to precinct, and then you put them in alphabetical order. You've got to have the alphabetical order in order to match up the requests that come in by, you know, their last name. And then we put them in precincts. And that is typically what we have had ready to go on Election Day. And then we, the, the part of the absentee process where the folks sit at a table and open up those, those envelopes and stamp the ballot and get it ready for the process, we've typically started that at 9:00. And we used to fill up this room, the hallway out here, and the multipurpose room was people doing that. And then the ballots, of course, would go over to the tabulator as soon as we got a precinct's worth. And that is, that has worked up until this point. So can, can the work of alphabetizing them and putting them in the precinct begin when we get them? Absolutely. And it does every time.
Commissioner Heiburger?
My question's about school board, it diverges just a little bit. So I went and voted this morning in the school board election for Tri Valley. And I was up at Colton at 8:00. They had 18 people whose names were not in the, in the book. Some of these people had voted in the primaries, their names was in the book. Some of these were couples, and the spouse would be missing. And when I was there, there were four people that their names were not in the book, three of which I knew. And so obviously, there was a lot of frustration as to why names were missing out of their voting books. I believe they were doing provisional ballots for those, but any explanation as to how people could just disappear?
This is the first that I've heard of this here, and I'll investigate that and have to bring that back to you.
Because I'll, I'll tell you, they were on the phone already when I was there and had been prior to me walking in the door, had already been on the phone several times, the Auditor's Office, so.
I was, I was aware they were having the election. I saw the poll books, and then we loaned them two of our shields, you know, to keep the distance. First I've heard of it, Cindy, so I'll find out.
All right. Back to the Election Task Force, other questions? Commissioner Bennega?
Bob, just to make sure I understand, when we got ballots? Bob, just to make sure I understand, when we got ballots six weeks before the election on the second or whatever the date was, did we start then sorting those by precincts by?
Absolutely.
So, when did we get behind and not be able to get the ballots that were coming in and caught up with sorting those? Because I understand that was one of the significant bottlenecks, if you will.
About the third week was where we, we sort of lost control of it and we started bringing people in. And I think I've said this to you before, that we have had every day after, some people came in later in the afternoon, but every day, we had between eight and 12 people. And we stayed down there in that office until eight thirty, nine thirty most nights. And we worked weekends as well. We did have staff down there. There just simply weren't enough people. And quite frankly, at that point, I realized that we'd probably lost control of that process. And so when I called volunteers, it was to staff the precincts because that was my ultimate backstop for voting. Because if you didn't get your absentee ballot sent out in the mail or whatever happened or no response on that, the, you could go to the precinct on Election Day and vote. And I would tell you this, that I was putting people in precincts on Election Day because people dropping out. It was difficult for me to find folks.
So, you probably had issues with getting enough volunteers to support your process?
I did, I did. Because, because we, you know, if I remember right, I think it was, we were two weeks into the election when Secretary Barnett sent out a request to everybody who had not yet voted in the election. And then, and then the return on those started quite heavily after that.
So, you didn't get them sorted for three weeks prior to the election, the ones that came in because you weren't able to keep up? Did the people who were working on Election Day, were they able to start the process of counting without all of those ballots that were not sorted?
Toward the end of the night, we had enough. But what the, what the problem is, is, is these ballots do not come in, in the precinct order. And so if we, let's say I got 10 ballots for VP1 in, in one batch and then, and, you know, an hour later, we had identified 20 ballots that come in from VP8. It is, it is a ballot management nightmare for us to process them, save them, put them on a stick, set that stick aside and go back later on when some other ones come in that are in that precinct. Because we have to count them by the precinct. Okay? So, if I, if I do a partial on a precinct, save it on a stick, then we've got to identify that stick, have a whole bunch of sticks. There's 71 precincts out there. And that is why on Election Day, when we did not have enough there to really put a meaningful precinct through, then I held up, held off on that there. And then when the Election Day ballots came in that night, we ran them through. And I think we got those through about 12:45 or one o'clock. And at that point, then I made the decision to send everybody home because we'd been up for 18 hours at that point.
So, help me understand, and maybe I missed that. When did we actually start counting votes?
Counting ballots?
Yep.
Starting about 7:15 that night, we started running the ballots through for the Election Day that came in. The absentees, we didn't start counting those till the next morning.
So, normally, we were able to start at 7:00 AM counting, but this time, we had to wait till we got all the precincts sorted? Is that correct?
It just didn't make sense to me to run the absentees at that time because we just had a smattering of each precinct.
So, we did get about a 12-hour late start, so to speak?
Yes.
Commissioner Barth, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Auditor Bob, I really think that, I don't think you probably need this committee. I think that you've probably learned enough from living through this little adventure that you could make the improvements necessary, the ones that Gerald is talking about, for example. And, you know, you had a number of handicaps here, one being the facility that you were using to sort and count the ballots. The museum just isn't set up really for this type of thing. If you had the multicultural building there or the arena, what are they renting the arena for these days? I don't know. But I think that spread out, get some more people online ahead of the election. And I do have a question. Did most of these people that got absentee ballots request for the next election also?
A lot of them did. And a lot of people think that they did, but we would, and they'd call in and go, where's my ballot? And we would look at what they, what they actually checked off on their request form. And a lot of times, a significant number of times, it did not match up. We also sent ballots out in the mail that never arrived. I've got a stack of ballots about that big down there that have shown up since Election Day. We can't count them after seven o'clock on Election Day. So, there's, there's issues of the timing. If you come in at 6:59 at the, the Auditor's Office and request that we mail you out a ballot, we're gonna send it by law. And so, you know, that doesn't make any sense, you know, to, to be sending out a ballot that late. There's no way that ballot's gonna get there and turn around, get, get voted and turn back around and sent down to my office in that period of time. And so, one of the recommendations that might come out of this year, of course, is gonna be that we have some sort of a, like the voter registration. We cut that off 15 days ahead of time. Maybe that would make sense to cut off the, the, you know, early voting, absentee voting part of that too. So, we can get those ballots through the system and not everybody's shocked when they, their mail doesn't turn around in one day.
Commissioner Benega.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so do we expect this same onslaught of absentees this October?
Referring to what you said where somebody checks all? Right now, there are 93,000 ballots in the queue statewide. And we're gonna have over 25% of them. So, I've already got close to 20, 20-some thousand ballots coming at me and the election's not even started yet.
Well, I obviously don't agree with just comments about not having the committee because this is a new paradigm in the whole process of elections. We've never had this many absentee ballots with a combination of the school, the city and the county. Created another issue that we probably haven't had for a while. And I think anytime that you have changes in systems, you have to go back and look at the system to see if in fact, if there's anything better that we could do. That's just normal in business. It's normal in any activity. So, I encourage you to continue that. The other thing that I'm hearing is there's probably a need for some legislative changes that we need to have clarified just to make sure that frankly, we can't start earlier. And maybe there's things that your, your committee will come up with also. But it seems like with, I don't know how many absentee ballots you finally ended up with, but that number was significantly higher than any we've ever had in the past, not even close. So, not only is there a need to review, but I think the recommendations of the committee will make the process simpler through the next process. And my gut feeling tells me that we're gonna have this new norm that people are gonna start voting by absentee much more frequently until we either have a vaccine or then they still may not change their habits. But, so I encourage you to continue this. I will find the contact information on the school board rep and then we can talk about that.
Okay. You know, and, and both of you are right, Jeff. I, I think that the committee, I, I think I've got a pretty good idea, some of the things that the committee's gonna recommend. And that will be establishing a staff, getting the budget and the place for that staff to, to process those absentee ballots on a daily basis. And, and the other thing that I, I really find value in, and Gerald, you and I have had a discussion about this, was I, I believe there are gonna be some legislative changes, at least to some administrative rules to kinda ease the pressure on this thing. And Auditor Bob going out to peer asking for something is different than if I've got a, a committee of citizens that have come to the same conclusion. So, I, I think that there is value. But basically, you know, to handle this next election, we're not gonna get any legislative changes because the November 3rd will be the election. They'll have to go through the legislative cycle, but hopefully down the road, this will take care of that. That also brings me to my next question, or my next thing that I wanted to talk about, and that is.
Before we leave that topic, I had a couple more questions about the other, if you don't mind. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna switch topics. So, my, my concern a little bit about what you've, I agree with a lot of what has been said this morning. I do think that there's a lot of value in this review board. I think citizens frankly kind of expect it. I'm a little concerned that you haven't set a calendar, just because November is gonna be here. And, you know, the way your process works, there's a lot of trigger points along the way. And so, I, I know you've been really tied up this week with recounts and you've got a couple more full days ahead of you, it sounds like. But it seems to me like you should be able to get calendar dates, you know, getting on people's calendars even in this COVID time is challenging. And I would really like to encourage you to get those meetings set up so that they can take place in July and early part of August. So, a report can be done, you know, by the end of August. So, that it's in, we've got the results and we can be in a good position before you start having to send out absentee ballots and, and those kinds of things to, to make any of the changes that need to be, that we think should be implemented.
And thank you for that input. September 18th is the day that absentee voting starts for the next election. And I believe that we will be in place for that. I could set some dates right now. Quite honestly, I, I wanted to have it in a more of a compressed timeframe between the end, halfway through July and, and August in order to get that out there and start looking at it. But I think there's plenty of time, Commissioner, to get this done. Get the, get the recommendations and put them into place.
So, you think you could get a, a report out with the recommendations?
My plan is to have that report out before the end of August.
Before the end of August. Okay. I just think the sooner the better, just for everybody's, it's for your benefit.
I do too. But there's, there's two things here. Number one, after this election, and I, I know it's, it's not pertinent, I was, I was shot. I was exhausted. I'm still not, my wife still suspects me, but, so I'm gonna take a couple weeks vacation. If somebody wants to run this while I'm gone, please step up. Let me know. The other thing is, is, you know, going down the road here, I have to plan right now for a new place. And, you know, I've been looking at the Coliseum over there because I think there's enough room on that floor. We could move everything over there, have it in one central location. Instead of, I had this building, I had the Election Center over there, which, you know, that building in the courthouse. Just the act of moving a tray of ballots took two people. I had to have a Republican and a Democrat to go over there. And moving those ballots at night, I don't think there's a lot of problem with it. But, you know, I mean, it's obviously, if I've got two ladies moving a tray of ballots at, at 11 o'clock at night over to another building, there's always that gap in there that I, I worry about. So, this year, I, for the next election, I would like your permission to secure the, the Coliseum building and start going, you know, towards the idea of moving everything over to there. And, and one of the first things, and I did have a talk with Mr. Krenz, was having some secure, a secure wire drop in there for the uploading process. Because right now in the Coliseum, it is not tied into the county internet system and we need a secure system. So, then there's other things that I will need to do as time goes on too. But that's what I, I, I don't know if this is the proper way to ask you for permission to use that Coliseum, but I plan on it if this is not, if this is not it.
Yeah, this probably, we need to have it on agenda. We need to vet out issues with respect to the multicultural centers use of that, you know, so, but.
Please consider this a heads up that I'm, I'm gonna pursue that path.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Benega.
Part of the committee's structure, is there a possibility that they would also have some input into your job description? So?
Absolutely. It's all open as far as I'm concerned. You bet. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be great for us to be able to see documented, kind of estimated timelines and job descriptions. And, I mean, I know there's a lot I could learn about how the whole process works. And I think it's helpful for the public to understand what you're up against with timelines and, and processes. So, I think there's been a lot in the press about absentee ballots and how, how that's gonna affect the process and, and voters' expectation of getting immediate results may need to be adjusted based on that. But we need to help educate the, the public about, you know, the challenges that you have and, and the fact that, you know, where processes can be improved and where we just, the, the fact of absentee balance, ballots are gonna create challenges for everyone and, and our expectations may need to be altered because of that. I don't know, but that's what I'm hoping to learn through all of this.
I, I think that's, that's exactly the goal of this, is to, you know, not only educate, you know, my staff and my processes, but the public in general. And in that way, being able to go to the legislature with some meaningful change and having a chance at it. I would also add that today, the state of Kentucky is having their primary. And Mitch McConnell's actually got a race from a Democrat in there the first time since, I don't know how long. And in the city of Lexington, I believe Lexington, there's one place. They opened up this football stadium. And so, everybody's gotta go to the football stadium. And there's another county that is a large metropolitan place outside of Cincinnati, Ohio. They have one large place. And it's gonna be a mess, folks. So, I don't want to tell you to be grateful for my small messes, but, you know, there, this, this is not just a Minnehaha County thing. It is going on across the nation right now with a lot of the same factors that are influencing their election, influenced mine. And that's the size of the absentee voting. And a lot of places have not been able to get all their precincts open. And that's why they, they are having those one single big place to, to vote at. So, it's, it's an interesting thing, you know? And there's also the legal concept. If we call it absentee voting, I think that, that, that legal definition of that is time to go. And we need to call it early voting because that's what it is. The absentee voting still has some ties to old statutes that involve nurses and, and patients that were in the hospital. And we've moved well beyond that at this point.
All right. And questions on that? Okay, I interrupted you. You can move to your other topic if, if you haven't already.
Well, my last topic was, I was hoping somebody would ask me about the recount yesterday, but that's not happened. So, let me tell you about it. We went in there and we anticipated some issues that we had that never materialized. And so, we had a very good recount. We were done about 12:45. And, and the difference between the election night tabulation results, including all the absentees and all that went with it, was one vote. And the one vote that came out of that pile of ballots was identified as not having a ballot stamp on it. So, they pulled one out. Other than that, the results stayed exactly the same. So, thank you very much. Tuesday, I mean Wednesday, to, to the rest of today, I'm gonna spend over at the Election Center. I've gotta like do a little bit of cleaning up on those machines and the Election Center, get ready for Toms tomorrow. And we think that Toms might develop into a two-day affair. Just looking at the logistics of what we have to do, testing the ballots, testing the machines, all that stuff. So, we don't know that yet, but starting Wednesday is gonna be very interesting. So.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Do you know off the top of your head which the recounts were and which candidates prevailed? Just since we're, because you just said the city hasn't done theirs yet. So, I'm just wondering if you would just tell our viewers who were prevailing in those recounts.
Oh, well, the recount that I did yesterday, my legislative recount for the county, Legislative District Number Nine, which just happens to have nine precincts in it, and Michael Clark and Bethany Soy were eight ballots apart. And at the end of the day, Michael was nine ballots apart. So, Ms. Soy was the winner of that election. And Mr. Clark was a gentleman, shook her hand and they called it good. So, and I'm hoping to have that co-geniality Thursday sometime too. But we'll see.
Thank you.
That's an amazing accuracy for a num, excuse me, the number, a number of ballots that you counted just to be off by one is pretty incredible.
And actually, that ballot, we, we counted that in there and the machine does not recognize a ballot that's not stamped. So, you know, we were spot on.
I'm curious, how many ballots actually showed up after the close, if you will? Do you have an idea?
I've got the box downstairs and I could go get them for you if you'd like. You know, it's a, it's a mail tub right now. And then there were some other ones that were undeliverable address. So, we, we pulled them out. But I've still got, I've still got a stack of envelopes. I'll bet that's all right now. And more of them come every day.
Commissioner Heiburger.
When you get a ballot that's late, does it go by the mailing stamp on it? Or it's just late, it's late?
Seized by my office at seven o'clock election night. Then you count.
That answer I knew.
I wasn't sure.
All right. Other questions? Comments? Well, we appreciate you being here with us today. I know this is a, a busy week for you and you've had a busy few weeks. So.
And just so you know, Carl and I are gonna have lunch on Thursday. Carl Zilstra.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right. Okay, so that takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to authorize emergency, emergency management to purchase a vehicle. Jason, it's good to see you.
Jason Gierman, Director of Emergency Management. I am here today to request authorization to purchase a vehicle.
Motion to approve the purchase of a new vehicle for emergency management.
Second.
Motion and a second? Comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just that this was in the budget for this year. So, just telling our viewers.
Thank you.
Whoa, 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 wait. So, we had a motion and a second? Whoa, 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 wait, so we had a motion and a second?
Not so quick.
Any roll call votes?
Oh, roll call.
You can run, but you can't hide.
Yes.
I motion passes unanimously, so, as long as you're here, you want to give us any update on COVID?
Figured that was coming.
You're trying to run.
Ours, the COVID updates, things have been fairly quiet. The hospitals have been kind of maintaining where they should be, and, you know, it just depends how much testing they do and when the numbers go up, but things are looking well, and, you know, Scott Wick did a presentation on the fair, and, you know, emergency management's going to be working the medical out there with the volunteers, so we're gonna, you know, start trying to obtain some PPE and some extra precautions out there, and we're going to do things a little bit different out there also, and have extra medical tents to keep people more separate when they come in, and if there's a need for that. But overall, you know, I met with the fire department here last week, there was no issues there, I've met with the ambulances, and, you know, there hasn't been a strong push for, where there's any issues, where they're begging for equipment and PPE, and I talked to the state yesterday, and it sounds like their stockpile's been up again, so things are looking good for that.
Any questions for Jason? All right, well, thank you, thanks.
Thanks.
Yep. All right, so that takes us to item 14, which is a briefing on the Bridlewood barn condition. Mark, good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Mark Krins, Director of Facilities. The Bridlewood barn at the fairgrounds has significant structural deterioration due to moisture sitting at the base of the column where it meets the foundation. So I worked with Henry Carlson Construction and Structural Engineering Associates, associates, excuse me, on an assessment, and it's determined that 11 of the 24 columns need immediate replacement repair. I put together a list of options with some cost estimates for your consideration. So, number one would be to repair the 11 existing columns that need immediate attention, $102,619. Number two, demolition and removal of the entire structure, just under $17,000 at $16,950. I looked at the possibility of the cost of a tent rental of similar size to that structure, $3,200. I also got an estimate for replacement of a pole building that's kind of the same lean to front, similar to existing structure, $85,275. And I also requested a revenue estimate if we were to put up a new structure, and I have not received that yet. So, I'm looking for some direction as to how the commissioner would like to proceed with this building.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I'm just going to make a comment, it was interesting in one of these write-ups that that building is from World War II and was used as, I think, an airplane hangar. I'm not positive how it was written, but it's quite interesting that that building's been around that long.
Yes, it's my understanding that it was originally at the airport, and it moved to the fairgrounds while it was at the airport, it was actually a barracks, is my understanding, so, yep, it's interesting.
Commissioner Bennega.
Yeah, has there been any conversation with the fair board on frankly whether they want it replaced, or if they're going to go along without it?
Yeah.
For this fair, I know they need the space, but ongoing down the road, is that a necessity?
Well, we're still in that process yet. We talked with Scott out there, and he's going to look into a tent rental for this fair, but there hasn't been any decisions on whether they need it, that's where we're looking into, you know, some of the revenues, what they could gain from it and costs, but.
The other question is, on the pole barn, is there any doors, garage doors on that?
Not on this estimate, no.
Right, and those are, as my understanding, the expensive part of a pole barn sometimes.
Yeah, I would assume they would be, you know, for the size they need, $3,000 or $4,000 apiece, and if you're going to span 200 feet, it's fair amount.
That's a lot of garage doors.
Any other comments? There hasn't been any statement, but I'm assuming that the commission, based on these pictures, agrees that this meeting, that this building needs to be demolished. But do you feel differently about that?
It's certainly not usable.
All right, so that was a briefing, so if that's the direction from the commission, we can go to our next item, which is item 15, which would be to declare the Bridlewood barn at the Sioux Empire Fairgrounds surplus, which is a step that needs to take place if the building's going to come down.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Muller. Yes, we kind of anticipated that this was the way the conversation was going to go, so we wanted to help you facilitate that. We are requesting the commission to declare the Bridlewood barns as surplus. That is the first thing that needs to happen before we can bring somebody in and tear it down, and the goal is to get that done before fair, and I know Mark has already been having those conversations. So, that is our request today, is to declare the Bridlewood barns at the Sioux Empire Fairgrounds as surplus for destruction.
That would be my motion, Madam Chair, and let's get it down quick before the fair starts.
Second.
Rotten as it looks, I bet it's going to be hard to take down.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote then. Bennigan.
How was your lunch?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Bar?
Aye.
Bennigan. Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and Commissioner Benniga lived through it, so it's all good. All right, thank you, Mark. Okay, so that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
Last night we had a planning and zoning commission meeting, and I zoomed in, and honestly, it didn't work as well as I would have liked. The audio coming from here was not the greatest. I would say that the audio from other people who were zoomed in was perfect, so I'm not sure what that is, it might be something we need to look into, but I would also say that on my end, while I have a gigabyte connection, my wife was streaming on the other room, and so maybe my computer signal was a little bit lower, but we approved the expansion of a CAFO, the Moody County Dairy up there north of Sherman, is going up by, I believe, 4,000 animals, without opposition. Mr. Bowdoin was present, and apparently is doing a good job, his neighbors don't object. We also approved as part of an expansion that was requested for an equestrian development on Highway 115 going north from Sioux Falls. They, it looks like they may want to even go beyond that, and interestingly, we had that midway project today. You know, that whole corridor is filling in, going on Cliff Avenue to Dell Rapids. It won't be long, and we'll have Kmart and McDonald's up there. And, you know, we did that Red Rock corridor, I think we're almost to the point where we need to decide how we're going to administer that area up there. And I know that, you know, as I look at that, there's a mobile home park just north of that equestrian place, you know, with 30 or 50 sanitary operations, and, you know, the more, it's on a hill, at some point that stuff is going to go down towards the river, even if it's not been treated properly, it's going to be a problem. The nitrates in our river are going up and up, and I know for the water districts, the, when they get water that's got high nitrate, they have to dilute it with water from another source, and that's getting to be an increasingly large problem. And I can go on about that, but we had a mobile home that was wished to be moved into Renner that was voted down, and it was not a long meeting, but our media person, Tony, was there, and he's not well today, I'm sorry about that. Take care of yourself, Tony.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I'm just quickly, I don't know, but I've mentioned before that I meet regularly with the courts and Aaron Surtzka from USD about the Safety and Justice Challenge grant and the work that's being done on court processing and stuff, and so we did talk this last week about the bond schedule, that was quickly changed during the COVID and the effects that that has had. At this point, that new bond schedule will remain in effect, but as things roll on, they will start to evaluate what some of those problems may have been with that change in that bond schedule. And then they also just said with pre-trial, they're really encouraging their attorneys to encourage their clients to make sure they're giving correct phone numbers so that they can get the text messages and emails we're sending out as court reminders, so. And then we just continue to talk about the budget of the grant and making sure we're spending it properly, so.
Any other liaison reports? All right, that takes us to new business, is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Bar.
Inasmuch as, you know, some funds may be coming, or seem to be coming our way for the COVID situation, is there any chance we could use some of that for the fairgrounds issues that are going to be clearly brief?
And I was going to mention that, there was a press conference yesterday that I attended with the governor and the mayor, where the governor announced that through some of the CARES Act fund relief, that the state has received money, and that of that money, $13 million, up to $13 million would be available for Minnehaha County to be reimbursed for COVID-related response, COVID-related expenses. And so, we are, you know, we were aware that we are going to be able to receive some reimbursement for COVID-related expenses, and so we have, through the auditor's office, been carefully tracking all of our expenses that directly were related to COVID. The state has done a good job of putting together some frequently asked questions and some additional information about how that works, along with a copy of the contract that we would need to sign in order to receive that reimbursement. We're still working through that, the details of that. I'm not sure that, since we contract with the fair and we don't do it ourselves, that those expenses would be eligible. I'm guessing that that's the way that that is going to work. But we are continuing to work through that and try to understand better. At the press conference yesterday, the state made clear that the government, as they have with a number of these federal programs, guidance comes out frequently, and frequently it contradicts itself, and so it's been a struggle to try to figure out exactly what the rules are, but we are going to be carefully working through that. Commissioner Bennega.
Maybe this is a question you can't answer yet, but-
Probably.
Sorry, then, I shouldn't answer-
That's okay.
Or ask. You talked about the hard cost of what we can identify, what about loss of revenue in other areas that we could project?
So far, you know, the governor has been pushing the federal governor and legislators to be able to use some of that money for revenue replacement, and right now that flexibility does not exist. There is, does appear that there's some flexibility, that some of the money at some point may be used to help, try to help some small businesses, but not governmental entities, so. But once again, there's probably more questions than there are answers right now, but they, you know, I would say that, and we can get that link to you, the state has provided some good information, there's some federal FAQs that have been put out, and the state has tried to distill that down to see how they apply directly to South Dakota, and they are very helpful, and I actually have a copy if anybody wants one, so.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind, I think at some point that'd be great to at least review, because I've had a few questions already.
Yep, absolutely. I mean, and I think the key is, is this, you know, this is just reimbursement, and that amount is just, you know, up to that amount. I honestly do not anticipate that the Minnehaha County expenses will go close to that amount, but, you know, we certainly are going to make sure that all of our eligible expenses are reimbursed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bar.
Madam Chair, I don't think the public really appreciates how hard you work. You know, you do so much more as chairperson than we do, and you barely get a nickel more than we do on an annual basis, and, you know, I can only say you're way underpaid and overworked, and I don't want your job anymore. But I would also say that, you know, when the government offers you tens of millions of dollars and limits what you can spend it on, you know, it's like, here's $20 million, but you can only buy a light bulb for your front door. I mean, we are borrowing that money, our grandchildren are going to be paying for that money, why can't we spend it on things that we actually need as opposed to just the light bulb, anyway?
Thank you. All right, anything else under new business?
My guess is that nickel an hour probably is not enough, and right now it's probably more like two cents an hour for all the hours you put in, so thank you.
Keeps me out of my husband's hair, so that's probably saves us on marital counseling. All right, anything else? Commissioner Bar.
Under old business.
There you go.
I would just like to say that in the last month, I've had three complaints about activity at the treasurer's office. And yesterday I had a woman call me who was treated so rudely and arbitrarily by the treasurer that she actually went out and vomited in the parking lot, this after waiting in line for extended periods. And I think that's unconscionable, and it doesn't matter if you've been elected to office for 40 years, if you can't do your damn job. We need customer service, we need people to be treated as American citizens, we need to do a better job in that office, and I hope that we do in the future.
Thank you. I would say we've tried very hard to work with the treasurer's office to come up with solutions to handle the customer demand right now, and most of, in fact, all of our suggestions, I think, have been uniformly rejected, and so, which puts us in the unenviable position of receiving complaints that we are having very little ability to affect a change on. So, we will continue to work for solutions, but it is an independently elected office, and we are frequently reminded of that. Commissioner Heiburger, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, two things, and not only do we receive complaints, but the city of Sioux Falls has been receiving complaints when they have no control over it. But I will say that I was told this week that the commission office quite some time ago requested a kiosk for renewing your tags, and that I was told that we would be hopefully getting one later this week that will be in this building. That was a commission office decision and request, and so we really are trying in every avenue we can to make things better for customers, but like Commissioner Bennigan said, we don't have a lot of options of what we can improve, but hopefully that is coming yet this week.
All right, anything else?
Move recess into executive session?
I don't believe we have an executive session today. Oh, we do have an executive session, I did not get that memo, sorry. So we have a motion to move into executive section?
Is it a recess first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's okay.
I made a motion for recess.
I have a motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second to recess, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we'll take about a five-minute break, and then we will reconvene into executive-